Well, I've got six o'clock, so I'm gonna open the meeting, so we can get moving here. Can I suggest we take some things out of order, 'cause some of that is really Connie reporting to us, and we go to number four. It's not very clear from the agenda, but this is the lot that was carved out of the Valonen Land, by the Berry Farm, on Parker Street. Remember, we carved out a little lot there?
Yeah.
Okay, it's under 61A, and so the town has right of first refusal to buy it. It makes no sense, in my opinion, it makes no sense to the town to buy it, but we still have to give them a letter saying that we recommend, actually, what we need to do is to send a letter to the plant, to the town council, saying we recommend that they waive the right of first refusal, 'cause they're the ones that have to do it. Okay? Any discussion on that, or is it clear?
So, as much. So, it's currently in 61A?
Right.
He wants to sell it?
Yeah, the one lot-
Okay.
-that he carved out on Parker Street.
Okay. So, it actually will go on to the tax roll?
Well, it's on the tax rolls now-
But it's 61A.
-at the full price, at reduced rate.
Right.
And he will have to pay five years of back taxes before he can actually sell it.
Okay.
Okay? I checked with the assessors, and that's the way it works. But, yeah, that's not really our concern. The thing is, it's a building lot, we, the town is not gonna do anything with it. So, this'll help them get the closing done sooner.
So, the motion you need?
I need a motion to recommend to the town council that they waive the right of first refusal for this lot. New parcel F on the plan and book as recorded here, Plan Book 385, page 36.
So moved.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, that's done. The other thing that, two things I wanna mention. One is, the draft open space recreation plan was completed this afternoon. Oops, sorry, guys. Was completed this afternoon, oh, Connie's here.
Sorry, in the process of moving. I'm sorry, I haven't.
Now, Connie, we already took care of the waiver of first refusal, and I'm just telling people that the open space recreation plan draft was completed this afternoon.
Yay!
So, that's gotta go to our consultant for review, and then we have to hold a public hearing, and then it goes to town council. But at least the bulk of the work is done, so that's good. I'm gonna ask Connie, when she gets back, to email each of you a copy of the draft, because what I'd like to do is have you review it, and if you, if we agree that it's a good document, write a letter to the open space committee saying that we approve of it. Okay? And support it, if you will. Because there's some things in there, that planning board, there's some action items on the planning board in there. So... Okay. How do you wanna run this, Connie? I see a laundry list of things here, and I don't know whether you're gonna be reporting on most of them, or what?
Uh, no, we're, this is a, this is a work-study session, so we should follow the order of the items of discussion, and we can, we can talk a little bit, and maybe discuss how we're going to proceed in regard to these particular topics.
Okay, well, I think topic one, we have anything to talk about. We resolved that last time, I thought.
I think it is, what you were supposed to do is discuss adding it to, we anticipate, and we had, we had anticipated the special permit application, which did come in.
Right.
So, I think that, at this point, based on our conversation with the town's attorney, we're supposed to just say, okay, you know, we've had this discussion, kind of recap.
Well, we did it in executive session, so we can't recap the discussion.
Right, but, but moving forward, that you would be receiving the application for the special permit.
Right.
That's pretty much covers-
That's all we need to do about that.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Number two. Oh, wait, first of all, let's approve the minutes-
Yeah.
-January 15th. Demo motion to approve, everybody to read them, first of all, to approve the minutes of the regular meeting on January 15th.
So moved.
Do you have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Demo motion to approve the minutes of the executive session.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Both, we're done.
Okay, official posting.
I'm sorry, did, they were-
Item two.
The, the minutes were supposed to be called out separately.
I did.
No, no, you did, you did.
Yeah.
But, but, they're not itemized that way.
Okay.
So, they should have, they should have been.
Yeah.
And, so we had Russ Denver and John Torscha approving, making the motion and seconding the motion, right, for both?
Right.
Okay, thank you.
So, Mr. Chairman?
Yeah.
Some clarification, please?
Yeah.
So, item one?
Yeah.
It says, "Discussion for the purposes of resolving pending litigation."
Yeah.
Are we going to have a discussion?
No, because we had that discussion in executive session.
So, why is it on the agenda, it's having a discussion?
I have no idea. I saw the agenda yesterday for the first time, and I've not had a chance to discuss it with our director.
So, Connie, I think you just indicated, so that there will be a, or there has been filed an application to amend the special permit for 13 North Main Street?
Correct. It was advertised yesterday-
Okay.
...in the Springfield paper.
And so, it will be heard at our next meeting?
Yes, on the 19th.
On the 19th. Okay.
We're right along. Item two.
So, there was some discussion about where the location of the official posting site is for the town of East Long Meadow. At the next meeting of the department heads, IT Director Ryan Quinby will further elaborate on the status of the official posting site. The official posting site is not the monitor in the library, 'cause it doesn't give us enough information, it's simply a highlight of agenda items, and really, when you're doing the notice or the advertisement, you should be giving more complete information. So, we will speak further in regard to where the official posting site is, but obviously, the bulletin board outside the town clerk's office is posting site. But if you look on the splash page of the East Long Meadow, Town of East Long Meadow webpage, which is the page that you see when you first open up, there's a, there's a section that, it's a little sign logo, and it's literally a sign, it looks like a sign, and it says "special meetings," or words to that effect. And, once we, once the, once the title of that is, is tweaked a little bit, that's where the official postings should be located. So, we obviously have to notice in a newspaper of general circulation under the open meeting law, but we're trying to communicate with folks in moving away from the use of the reminder. People have become comfortable in looking for information in the reminder, and several departments have found that there have been some shortcomings with using that particular publication, which is why we use the newspaper, the Republican now. So, stay tuned, I should have more information for you at the meeting following our department head meeting in a couple of weeks. Okay?
So, before we move on, and I hate to-
Right ahead.
-keep jumping in. So, I find it a little frustrating when, when I might find myself going through legal notices, it's part of what I do for a living, that I see the notices of a public hearing being posted for the planning board, and it's posted before I get notice, before anyone gets notice, that it's going to be a public hearing? So, what's the possibility of getting a copy of the posting at the same time you send it to wherever you need to be filed?
Perfect, absolutely, most reasonable question, because what we're also doing is sending two weeks in advance your packets. So, we have, I think, when you received your, your information about notice, deadlines, meeting schedule, all of you are supposed to be receiving the agenda at that time, two weeks in advance of the meeting, so that you're aware. I think that, moving forward, we'll be able to address that a little bit more readily for you. And, of course, we can't control the United States Postal Service delivery, but we try as best we can to get you the information that you need two weeks in advance, oh, excuse me, a week in advance of the meeting, but we are posting that agenda two weeks in advance of the meeting.
So, I'm just asking for another click to send it to the board members at the same time you're posting it?
I think we'll be able to do that. I think we've been in a transition for a few months, and as we tighten up procedure-
Just put it up there.
I am very grateful, I'm glad to hear that you're, you look forward to receiving the agenda in advance of the meeting.
I'm a little confused, Connie, because we said we weren't going to lock the agenda, okay, until a week before.
It would be a draft agenda that you'd be getting?
In, in this, for this meeting, I did not see the agenda until Monday.
So, let me take that back, it wouldn't be a draft agenda. So, two things, that's a two-part question. So, we send the agenda out two weeks in advance, and if there are any changes, then it would be an amended agenda, and it would be noted, and it would be uploaded again to the website if it's amended with changes. I think in the past, that you, you maybe haven't even received information that far in advance. And I apologize if you were not able to meet with me, but we had a busy week last week, and I had a couple of flu days, and I'm not, Friday was my first day off.
I understand. So, I'm commenting on is the fact that the agenda was not posted to the town website until Friday, and I did not get a copy of it in my email until Monday. Okay? So, obviously, this meeting did not meet the schedule that you're aspiring to. Right? Okay, that's all. Okay, that's fine.
I, please, just two quick things. I was curious, one, what the cost difference between the reminder and the Republican is, and then, but, the other thing I was just going to say, I know that, this must have been either maybe a month ago, I know that it was, because I remember, because I think I had called you the next day, you had sent it out like two weeks, or around that time, about two weeks before, so I know that it's been, this one, we kinda got more at the last minute, but I know the last, previous one or two, you guys were pretty good about getting it to us, or at least I got it in the mail very much in advance. But, yeah, going back to my first question, so do you know the cost difference for, between the two newspapers?
No. The applicant pays the cost, and it would depend on the number of lines, and there's consistency in the lines, but the applicant pays that directly to the Republican. They also pay directly to the reminder. So, the only time we would see the fee for advertising would be if we were advertising for a zoning amendment. Okay?
Okay.
Okay.
I just, isn't it a timing thing, too, between the reminder and the Republican? Wasn't it a little bit quicker to go with the Republican?
Yes. Yes.
We're right along. The annual town report, I understand that's already been submitted to the office?
Yes, but I just noticed, like, I don't know if Ms. March called you, because I was instructed by Ms. Connie to just have Ms. March call you, because I saw, like, the name of Mr. Russell Denver in a twice.
It was twice, yeah.
Yes.
Yeah, March emailed that to me, but I, since she got it, I assume it's been submitted. So, it was submitted exactly as you guys got it last time. Nobody sent me any comments, so I assume it was acceptable.
That's good.
Okay. We dealt with number four already, and have asked that a letter be sent to the board due to the town council recommending, that the planning board recommends that the town waive its right of first refusal. Okay?
Yep.
That's clarified. Comments from Conservation Commission?
Anything coming? No? Any comments coming from the Conservation Commission for the planning board?
Nothing.
Okay, all righty. That's a standard line item, always get that.
Okay. Form revisions. I think we have a few forms at the back here.
So, we, so we were looking at the special permit application, and the current application that we have in use falls short. So, if you look at, this is the current application. So, I borrowed from my previous place of employment a special permit application that gave a little more detail in regards to the material that we look for on an application. For instance, right now, if you look at the current application, it doesn't ask us, or it doesn't ask the landowners to identify the zoning classification, the present use of the premises, the proposed use of the premises. We're also looking, if you, if you skip to item five on the revised application, the number of customers per day, the numbers of employees, the hours of operation, the days of operation, the hours of delivery, and the frequency of delivery. I think that gives you an opportunity to address these matters in public hearing without having to jog your memory, because these are standard requirements that you should be looking at in a special permit for consistency and clarity. We also need some other items that, again, have been omitted in the earlier application that'll make it, it'll make it better moving forward for receiving and processing applications from applicants. We also look for site photographs, I haven't seen site photographs come in, and you all don't necessarily get to go out to the site and visit it.
So, in your professional opinion, do you think this streamlines the process?
Oh, yes. It's a little more work on the part of the applicant, but at first, because it's different.
So, would it be your professional opinion that if they did things correctly upfront, that the back end of the process would be smoother?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
And I wanted to cite a specific example, in the site application, there's a building that's going up on Shaker Road. The applicant brought in all of the materials that you needed for review. You, you approved that project in one meeting, and the building's going up, and it's winter, you know, and shovel in the ground, you know, there was some reservation on the part of the applicant that he would be able to start his construction, but he did. And you can see, moving forward, if you have somebody who's already willing and able to provide the documentation that you need to review your applications, they can certainly complete a project in a timely fashion. So, that's the special permit. I wanna look at it again. I would love your comments, I, excuse me, I would value your comments also on this, looking at what we currently use and comparing it to this particular special permit application. Special permits are, you don't just dole them out, you know, these are, these are approved based on certain conditions. So, you want to take these applications seriously that are being brought forward, because you don't just get to do it by right, you know, whatever the project is. So, the applicant has to present to you why he feels, or she feels, that this is a good project that is of benefit to the town, and not interfere with any, any of the public's right to quiet enjoyment, or whatever real estate bundle of rights that they might have. So, that's one of the applications, and then, we also were looking at revising the A&R plan, excuse me, the Form A, application for endorsement of the approval not required plan, otherwise known as the A&R, under subdivision. I also noticed we were a little light on some of the details, and I think in reviewing applications, it would be helpful if you had a little more information with the, with the plan that was permitted for your review in advance of the meeting. A&R, they're a curious animal, only Massachusetts allows A&Rs. And with an approval not required under subdivision law, it doesn't have to be advertised. So, someone could come in with a lot line adjustment on a lot, and there's no notice to a butters, there is no legal notice in a newspaper of general circulation, and, you know, Mr. and Mrs. Jones that live next to Mr. and Mrs. Smith are wondering, why is there a single-family house going up in my neighborhood that I had heard nothing about? So, I, this particular form gives a higher level of detail, and unfortunately, until the A&R process is dissolved at the state level, they are here, we can at least look at something, 'cause I, some of the plans that come in, or some of the plans that I've seen in our historical data, they're a little light on the elements, you know, of a plan. So, you have, in following the subdivision regulations, as well as the requirements by DPW, that they also look at this plan, because there typically is, is, is an impact on the drainage. So, it just, it makes it, it gives examination of the plan, it takes it to a little bit higher, higher level, you know, a little more critical review of the plan.
Are these sort of been used in other communities as well, to streamline the process?
Oh, yes. Oh, yes. We planners, we pilfer with no shame. We borrow with no shame. We put things out there without any reservation. So, we are always talking to our listener, you know, about improving whatever it is, whatever the process might be, whether, whatever application, it might be whatever bylaw or ordinance might be out there. We communicate electronically, and we do meet in professional, professional gatherings and share our thoughts and our information. So, those are two. I don't think, any other ones, please, just these two?
Yeah. The other ones are like, I don't know, it's very simple. What's this? I know, that's the Mr. Joyce, so I think that makes sense.
Okay.
Then we have the update to the master plan.
Uh, no, we're still, we don't have any updates to the master plan.
Okay. Then, mixed use zoning. I would like to take some time to take a look at this. Connie, I took the liberty of preparing and distributing to the board tonight three documents. One is a summary of the lot characteristics, one is the last version of the old bylaw that was withdrawn from the town council, and the other is an outline draft of something I put together for us to start with. And I think what I'd like to do is to look at the one that I put together and see what people think of it, and whether or not that's a good starting point for where we wanna Take a few minutes to look it over, 'cause it's the first time you're seeing it.
Is this the new draft outline?
Yeah, the new draft outline.
And you're calling it a multi-use district?
Uh, yeah.
I-
Multi-use.
Right. And how did you arrive at that term?
That's what term we've been using all along.
Mixed.
Oh, mixed use. Mixed use, okay, make it mixed, change it to mixed, thank you.
Oh, okay, thank you.
I, I did this today-
Okay.
-because I had not received anything to work from. And make it mixed. The, my philosophy, by the way, in case you haven't guessed, is that sitting down with a group of five people and trying to write something does not work. I would rather give you a draft, no matter how bad or incorrect it is, that you can chew at, and then we can work around it. Okay? Rather than try to sit here and write something collaboratively, which doesn't work. So, every time it says multi, we're gonna make it mixed, okay? We'll go, we'll search and change. Basically, I stole a lot of this from the other special districts that we have in town, starting out with, starting out with the suggestion that projects done, or developments done in this district shall be under special permit. Okay? And site, and site plan review. And I added design review there. Okay? Because I think for this district, particularly, design review is very important.
Especially if it's a new district.
Yeah, exactly. And because it is such a, it may be a very large proposed development, and therefore, the way it looks will have significant impact on the town, and so, design review is important.
And there's actually, I remember Deb Bushnell pushing for the design review committee to be reestablished.
Yes.
So, this might be a good project?
This might be a good project, although he doesn't do that.
Yep.
So, last year, when I started, I actually, we did a press release, and we did-
Asked for people to volunteer?
One person.
Well, once this starts to take hold, and actually, it looks like it's gonna be serious, then I think you might find more people to be interested.
That would be so welcome.
Because it'll actually be a project to actually work on.
Yeah.
And, you know, I, I would like to see some, some folks who maybe, who hadn't been involved in the town planning in the past, to come forward. This isn't going to be, I don't foresee this design review committee as meeting twice a month, or, you know, I see this as being something that is less time-consuming, or at least requires less of a time commitment than the planning board requires. And I think that it might give people an opportunity to come to the table who didn't have a lot of time to share. I also would like to see more of a youthful demographic coming to the table and expressing their desire, because they are the future.
That would be nice.
Yes. Well, if you want to engage an audience, and you want people to, who have grown up in the town, to stay here and not move away because they want other amenities that other towns or cities can provide, we want them to be part of the process. So, John, please tell your friends.
We do have, I think, a couple of extra copies of these documents, one's the-
Don't my friends do.
So-
Yeah, I, I think my white hair makes me look older than I really am.
I agree with that.
Take no offense.
So, the second one is, is purposes-
I think you look young, Mike.
Okay?
I look bald. Bald, fat. The only question I have on this is, should we, under types of housing, building types?
Yeah.
Is condominiums considered under one of these classifications of housing?
Condominiums are a form of ownership. It's a form of ownership. A condominium is a form of ownership.
A condominium can be made up of single-family dwellings, townhouses, multifamily dwellings. Yeah, it's just a different way of owning things. Okay. Okay. I took a stab at some purposes, okay, again, stealing from other parts of the bylaw. Adding in number two, reduce vehicle trip miles by providing services within walking distance of residential units. And put in open space and promote redevelopment of legacy industrial sites, because that's what we're aiming at. The uses allowed, again, would be, the key thing here is business and commercial uses compatible with and supportive of residential uses. And in the table of uses, we'll call out for this, which specific uses would be allowed. As you know, our bylaw distinguishes from a commercial district and a business district. And the uses in those districts are different. In this mixed-use district, we would, I think, want some of each of those, some commercial and some business. So we would want retail, but we might also want law offices or a real estate office, whatever.
So in the previous draft of something like this?
Yeah, what you have here.
We, we did lay out, we did go through with the petitioner at that time.
Right.
A long list of what we felt should be in, not be in.
Exactly.
That type of thing. So you're kind of stealing from that?
Yeah, we will steal from that. Okay. Again, this is just the first look at this. It's, it needs a lot of additional stuff, but. Then in three, I got the, those are the uses, okay. And then four, we need to do the density and dimensional regulations. And I don't think we're going to get through that tonight, but I called out what I think are the key ones, the minimum parcel size, which is going to be either 20 or 40 acres. Okay?
I have to interrupt you.
Sorry?
I have to interrupt you. I don't think you should be setting parcel size. And the reason I don't think you should be starting, setting parcel sizes is because historically, mixed-use development occurred in New England, all over. You had, you had shops on the first floor, and you had apartments above. And they could be one town block, one city block. If you look at Stockbridge, just as an example, or you look at any of the other communities, the small towns to large towns. I don't think you should be setting size of land area. I think it should be dependent upon what's currently there and what is proposed. And if you set acres, if you set a parcel size, that is just not going to be, it's not going to do us well. Because what I see is this particular mixed-use development draft is being created for one parcel in town that is 40 acres. So I would urge you and caution you not to stipulate the land size.
Okay, I would rebut that in the sense that I know that the town council is very concerned about mixed-use development elsewhere in town. And one of the only reasons that they are looking favorably on this is because it's a large parcel, an industrial land, to be redeveloped, and that much of the town council is not in favor, at least from what I have heard from them, of having small mixed-use development at this time.
So I'm going to use an example of a, of a, of a site that I think is perfect for mixed-use development.
I, Ms. Brothers, please.
But wait, George.
I'm running the meeting.
But I am your planner.
Can you wait a second?
Yes, go ahead.
Okay. The town council needs to approve this bylaw.
Yes.
If they feel that this mixed-use development can go anywhere in town, and if the bylaw allows it under special permit anywhere in town, it can, it will reduce the support for this bylaw in town council.
I beg to differ, because what you're looking at is, 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 you're looking at a specific parcel.
Yes.
Right, which we're not discussing at this time.
Right.
But we, you have a, you have, we're going, right across the road in this, there's several, there's several properties right in the center square, right in the rotary, that could be used for mixed-use development. Should a developer decide to put a second story on what was known as the old ski house, you could have a mixed-use development there. And it's actually prime, because it's already the existing downtown area. If somebody were to decide that they wanted to instead build, of building a storage center next to a residential neighborhood, they could petition for a zoning change right in Center Square. That is already our downtown. And mixed-use is all about the downtown. It's not about creating a mixed-use environment in the middle of a cow pasture. Mixed-use is, is, this is a planning tool that is used to enhance the downtown area. It is to promote connectivity. It is to promote a pedestrian-friendly environment where people reduce their vehicle miles traveled. So, so.
With due respect, okay, we're writing this bylaw for large parcel development. If the town feels that they want mixed-use development in small areas in the Center Square area, that is a completely different proposal, a completely different bylaw, I think. It would, would, everything we're going to put in here about setbacks, buffers, and so on, cannot apply in the Center Square, because there are no setbacks. There are no buffers. Okay, they don't exist. It's too tight.
Well, that's the point, that's the purpose of mixed-use.
That would be a different bylaw, okay, for a different kind of district. This is for a large development district.
Then you might want to call it a planned urban development and not a mixed-use district.
I take that under advisement.
Well, as a planner, as a professional, who it.
We can call it whatever we want.
No, it's, it's an entirely different zoning ordinance, zoning bylaw. A planned use unit development is, or a planned urban development, or a planned unit development, is different from mixed-use.
So what is a planned?
Mixed-use is usually with a zero setback.
What is a planned urban development?
You have a mix of uses.
Yes.
Yep, that are, that are, generally, it's something that is created in the cow pasture. And I'm using the cow pasture, because you think of a raw land.
Fine, we, we can change the name of this, this, this thing. What we need to do is agree on the details.
But no, you're not. You're, you're presenting two conflicting ideas. If you're looking for mixed-use development, then that is one type of zoning bylaw, zoning ordinance. If you're looking for planned urban or planned unit, that's another one.
Well, that's what we're looking for, if that's what you're calling it.
Well, then maybe we should.
We should call it that.
We should look at other examples of that particular type of zoning bylaw.
That would be great, if you can provide them for us.
Well, you know.
Can we, can we kind of, let's move along?
Move along.
Yeah, I agree. Okay.
Our, just a quick question. Are planned urban developments usually, can they be in towns of size?
Yes, yes, because again, you're creating something that generally, usually is on a raw, a land that has not been, it's green development, usually green development, a green field, or this happens to be the site the site of an industrial use. But if the, if, if, if a developer were willing to demolish the existing structures and start with a tablo rosa, a clean slate, and build from there, and design and develop, you would have something that usually is on a larger parcel. But mixed-use, again, going back to mixed-use, tradition, that is traditional development. It's an organic development that.
Fine, we get your point. Can we move on?
Excuse me?
We get your point. Can we move along on this particular brownfield development? Okay.
I don't think we can talk about this particular brownfield development.
We're talking about a bylaw that will allow this.
I make a motion to adjourn for 10 minutes, please.
Okay.
Do I have a sec? Can you ask?
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.